You ready? Good evening, everyone. If everyone's ready, we will go ahead and get started with our agenda, starting with item one, call to order, and we will now move on to item two, roll call, Superintendent Hooker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Heidi Hensley, Ms. Mary P. Bagby, Ms. Linda Davis,
Here.
Dr. Patricia Jaeger,
Here.
Mr. Tim Denton,
Here.
Dr. Monbi Anderson,
Here.
Dr. Lakeisha Gant, Ms. Nicole Hall, and Mr. Mark Evans.
All right, we have a quorum, and we can move on to item three on our agenda. For the President's Board Report, I don't have much, just three items. We have our retreat on Saturday from nine to four. The agenda is posted in Symbli, and also there's a Google Shared Document for you if you want to like add notes to it or anything. At the retreat, we will cover quite a few policies. So just make sure that, you know, you kind of look through it before Saturday so you can review the policies that we're going to discuss, and we'll be ready to just make action. And also, we will talk about our legislative agenda, so Superintendent Hooker would lead that, will lead that discussion. There is an Excel spreadsheet that was shared with you, with all of us, from our CFO, where we can enter in our own personal sort of priorities for our budget, because the budget will be a large part of our conversation on Saturday. And so completing that spreadsheet by noon tomorrow will help them gather that information and guide the discussion that we have with Mr. Greiner on Saturday morning. So please make sure you fill out that Excel spreadsheet that was shared with you by noon tomorrow. If anyone else besides Mr. Denton as our first chair and Ms. Davis as our alternate would like to serve as our legislative delegate for the GSBA Conference in June, please let me know via email, and I will let Mr. Denton and Ms. Davis know that they can relieve themselves of that duty. They've been doing it for the last two years, I believe it is. So if anyone else wants to step up and take over, let me know, and we will organize that. And just note that we will have an executive session this evening. It will be brief, but make sure that we don't just hop up and leave as soon as our meeting is over. Okay, that's all that I have. And now we will move on to item four, Policies Discussion. So this is the first read for one and several that are returning back to us for a second read. And at that point, they will move on to Public Comment if we have no further discussions on the second reads for the appropriate ones. So let's start with item A, First Read for Policy IG, Guidance and Counseling Program. Does the district have any information they'd like to add on this policy revision?
This particular policy revision that you're looking at is just simply changing the language to be up to date in that it's no longer considered a guidance counselor, it's a school counselor. And so you'll see much of it is really just updating the language within there and providing some additional description around the work that they do. But ultimately, it is pretty much the same, aside from the additional descriptors and then updating the language to be in alignment with the current school counselor role.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor to questions, opinions, thoughts on this current vision, version. Mr. Denton?
Yeah, just a quick question. Dr. Scott, I guess, are we also going to change the title of the policy since it has the word counseling in there too?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be at this afterwards, just guidance program? I mean, counseling program, I mean, yeah, counseling program, okay.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Davis?
I recall we had a great difficulty in the past in changing the policy names because they're kind of like shared across multiple places. Are we able to do that now at our discretion?
Got you, okay. And so with that, I can check with Ms. Bonas regarding that, if that's one of those that would be the same across all GSBA, or if it's been changed at GSBA as well. So we would be in accordance with that one.
Yeah, because all we're talking about is taking out the word guidance, right?
Correct.
And what does that mean? I mean, to lose that word in it. I apologize, I didn't get to all of the policies for tonight, but I'll definitely take a look at it again because it's a first read. So thank you. I just know we had that problem.
All right, other questions? Okay, so this policy will circle back to us next month for a second read. If you do end up having some questions after tonight's meeting, please make sure that you reach out to Ms. Bonas and copy Dr. Hooker with your thoughts so that when it comes back around in a second read, those questions will have been addressed by the district, and we can move it forward. Okay, Second Read for Policy DF, Revenues. And so this would be the final iteration that would go back, that would go to public comment. Any questions, none? Yes, Mr. Denton?
Yes, thank you. This is just a little script, there's an error, but just on one F, I think it's supposed to be knocked down, so I guess if, you know. Instead, it flows from E right into F, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, there's no hard return for the F, mhm. Other thoughts?
I did have one question. I think this was prob, not I think, I know that this was discussed and approved long before my time on the board. Is there a reason for the $50,000 threshold for schools to be able to apply for the grants? Is that, is there a reason behind that particular threshold? Or is it just historically, that's just the way we did it?
And I'm not familiar with that as well. This was originally written in 2017. Mr. Pruitt, do you recall why there was a $50,000 threshold for Policy DF?
Yes, so you're talking about for the superintendent to approve expenditures?
Yeah, to delegate to schools the authority to apply for small grants.
Oh, for small grants. I'm sorry, nobody asked me to look at these policies, so let me pull it up, see what we're talking about.
I'm assuming it has to do with the $50,000 threshold for the board to approve spending, but that wouldn't really make sense because this is for grant applications. So I was just wondering, I mean...
Yeah, I don't know anything about that threshold.
Ms. Palmer, are you, are you? Okay. We will find out and get back with you. Yes, Ms., Dr. Jaeger.
Do we even have an Office of Grants and Research?
We do not.
That work is currently handled by James Barlamet and his team.
So that would be under the Division of Innovation.
Strategy and Governance.
Yes.
So it seems that there might be some additional redlining that needs to happen before it does go out to public comment. I'm sorry that I brought that in.
Yeah, we can, we'll make note of that and change the language to that department as well as finding out the rationale for 50,000 for small grants.
And the only reason I ask is because, you know, if, if schools would like to explore having a larger sort of opportunity to apply to a larger pool of money, particularly now that we're seeing cuts in all sorts of places, I don't know. It was just a thought, but that's not a reason for us to hold this policy here. We can, we can move it forward, I was just wondering.
And I think that the policy doesn't prevent them from doing it. It's just that if it's a $50,000 or more, they would work along with that department to submit those grants.
And that makes sense, I could understand that from an oversight perspective. Yeah, okay.
So just, we do need to make sure that all of these have had the attorney's review, right, prior to them coming to us for the final readout, should we not?
Mr. Pruitt, is that something that you would like for us to engage Ms. Bonas with?
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
So the question from Ms. Davis was, before these policies come to the board, they should have an eye by you. And I thought that that was part of the process because I know that you take a look at them to make sure that they're in accordance with state.
I mean, only if somebody tells me they're coming up, and I haven't been hearing much about them lately.
Okay.
That's something we can, thank you.
That sounds like a problem. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're good, we'll do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, so if there are no more questions, we can move on to item C. And this is Second Read for Policy IHAA, Final Examinations. Are there further questions? Okay. Seeing none, I will move to item D, Second Read for Policy AFC, Emergency Closing. No questions? Ms. Davis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. It's a holdover, it's fine.
But all of these are going to go, go through, right? Yeah, back to, uh huh, I'm good.
Okay, and then Policy IHE, Promotion and Retention. Dr. Gant, would you like for us to wait for you to get settled before we move on from policy discussion? Okay. All right, so I see no additional comments or questions regarding the second read for these policies. So I think what we can do, Ms. Palmer, is move these along to public comment to return for a vote. All right, we will now move on to item five, the Business Items for Discussion for Consent Agenda. I'll start with A, go down the list. If you have, if you would like them polled for discussion, please raise your hand high and say, poll. A, February 13th, 2025 Work Session and Board Meeting Minutes. Consent. B, Personnel. Consent. C, Contract List. Poll.
No, 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 not the contract list, but the personnel. I didn't see that. And I don't know if it's something with my login or what's going on, but I did not see a personnel list.
It's okay.
But I do log in to read the, to get into assembly, but... Well, and I log in from home too, so that's the other thing, but I still log in. And so I didn't see the personnel list this time.
All right, would you like for us to temporarily poll it so you can review it?
Can I do it between sessions? That would be excellent.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Contract list too, that would be awesome.
Okay, so Personnel and Contract List, we will temporarily poll for Ms. Davis to review. All right, item D, Pre-K Classroom Furniture RFP.
Oh, I see, okay.
Questions or poll?
Poll.
Okay.
And I have questions.
Okay. So that item is polled, and we can just open up the floor for questions now and let the district address them.
Okay. So this is the pre-K, and this is from Bright From the Start. Is that 500 and something, about like half million dollars for furniture? Is this the one that we're looking at, the pre-K classroom furniture?
Yes, ma'am.
RFP, which is great. So the Bright From the Start money comes, that's not coming out of our general fund. That's coming straight from Bright From the Start, right? So we're not actually spending this money. Yeah, can you help me write? Can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, my mic is off.
Oh, hold it then. Oh, there we go. Yeah, I did it.
So much better.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, it's additional funding that we received from Bright From the Start to renovate all of the pre-K classrooms in the district.
Well, congratulations, first of all. That was amazing when I read it, and I'm like, wow, we've never seen that. I've not seen anything that large coming from them, but they do everything through here. So that was my biggest question. I didn't want the public to think that this was money coming from our general fund budgets. This is literally kind of pass-through money.
This is extra money, yes.
Yeah, well, not extra, but pass-through, and then congratulations for getting that award. That was the main thing that I have for that.
Okay. All right, so that was the only question that I saw, so keep it on the consent agenda, correct, Ms. Davis? Okay, no other objections? Okay, moving on to Teach Town. I see no objection, okay. Ms. Bagby? Oh, Ms. Bagby, your mic is off, do you mind turning it on? It's a little button on the mic itself. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Could you have someone explain more about the Teach Town money, the funds?
Yes, Dr. Scott will be glad to explain that to you.
So Teach Town is the curriculum that we have been using for our students that are in our Adaptive Special Education Program. So this is an online resource, and so it requires an annual renewal for the actual reason, but it's been used for years with that program.
It's, it's online teaching?
No, so there are online pieces to it, but the teachers provide the instruction, and then there's actually some online resources as well.
And this fund goes to these teachers that's going to be providing this, these instructions?
Yes, so it's to purchase the materials and the online resources that go along with the curriculum.
I saw someone else, Mr. Denton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was, on here it talks about that, that we'll be able to monitor student progress through detailed data reports, and that we've seen significant gains. I guess, and I don't mind going ahead and moving forward tonight, but could we have some anonymized data reports from that shared with the boards that we can see that progress, how it's, how we've had increases since going to this curriculum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Gant?
I was just going to ask quickly with the curriculum that aligns to the Georgia, the assessment for our student population. The assessment that they are administer, is that, it's yearly, right?
Yes, are you talking about the Georgia Alternative Assessment? Yes, it's...
Okay, and is it normally, I'm guessing, well, I don't know, since it's sort of adapted, is it normally like an administration, sort of similar, like an administration window in the spring? Or does it just sort of depend based on like the student and what their needs are?
So for that assessment, is it, it's a collection of artifacts that are then compiled, and then they're evaluated, and it's sent to the state to then evaluate? So each student has their own almost evaluation packet. And so it's collected individually based upon their actual IEP goals.
Okay, and then do they, with that packet, Dr. Scott, do they provide like a, is it a score that they provide? Or more so like they're progressing to the IEP, towards the IEP goals?
So it would be an, a comprehensive score that they would get associated with the GAA, but not a score like what we see for Georgia Milestones.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, are there other questions for Teach Town? There were quite a few, and so I'm not 100% sure if there's consent on this or if there's desire for it to be pulled and voted on separately. Okay, all right, so we will keep it on the consent agenda. Next item is Field Trips. Okay. And next item is Early Visionaries Academy Charter School Application.
I did have a Field Trips question.
Uh, Field Trips, okay.
If I may. So yes, I was, thank you first of all for the itemization that shows us, you know, the date, the time the kids are going to be gone, and that little matrix that was in there. I really appreciated that table. What I was missing was a cost per student, and then where those costs were born. And as I read through each of those, it looks like, I can't tell from the, what's presented, what the impact is on the budget for the district, right? And I know, these are very important part of our student learning and growth, but again, to quantify that would be very exceptional. It seems like sometimes it's just the bus transportation because the costs are being borne by the students or the parents. And then sometimes there's their fundraisers and things of that nature. So again, if Field Trips are an integral part of the educational process, what is the actual cost to the district to do that? And if it's only transportation, then I would like for us to be able to see that so that we'll know what we're actually voting for. I know we're approving them going, and that...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, so basically you're wanting to, within the submission of a Field Trip request, for them to identify which elements of that Field Trip may have to be paid through the general fund versus those that would be paid by the participants? So that you know the costs that would impact the general fund.
Right, because the budgetary thing is what I'm paying attention to, again, is like, you know, so much money for Field Trips, and expenses, and is that the only thing that we have in fuel costs? So in order for me to make a financial decision about supporting these, I need that kind of financial data.
There's some fiscal impact information included in each individual Field Trip document?
Right, I have that. I went through and it talked about the cost per student, I wrote all of those down in a column. And then I was still looking because once I got through the cost per student, some of them were parent-funded, some of them were fundraised, and then one had nothing to indicate where the money was going to come from, but it did have a cost there. And so again, what I want to know, as we're trying to make decisions about budgets, and as we're looking at potential losses of revenue coming into the district, I'm just going to need a little bit more information to be able to speak intelligently about what I can prioritize and what I cannot. So again, this is an easy hit because it's, you're giving us part of the information, and I don't know, you know, are we just doing this because it's something that we support and endorse versus something that we're funding out of the general fund or any other fund that we have oversight of, which would be all funds that come to the district? You good?
Okay. And so then I wonder from an operational perspective, in the part of the documents where it discusses fiscal impact, perhaps adding, you know, a fifth or sixth item that includes the cost to, or the, the total cost from general fund and the total cost from SPOST and the total cost from grant? If that makes sense, just...
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay, okay. And Ms. Davis, does that sound like it answers your request?
If that covers it, yes, that would be great.
Okay.
Because I see, I mean, I love that it tells us which strategies or priorities that we're supporting in that, but again, those have to be funded, and so we've got to make some financial decisions at some point.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with what that request was. Dr. Gant?
To clarify, you're referencing F, Field Trips?
Yes, yes.
And when we add, or when that information is added, is that something that these coaches and teachers will have to put together, or... Is it gonna, I guess my question is, while I do think it's important that we know, is it going to add an extra layer of challenge for teachers and coaches and things like that that already have to do this, oftentimes in addition to the things that, you know, they're doing? So I don't know if that's, my, Dr. Hooker, where, where would that column come from? Like, who would be responsible for that?
Teachers will be responsible for that.
And so I couldn't, I don't know, I know that's a bit out of our, our reach. I do think the information is important, but I know like having to put in a request for transportation and having to like put in any other requests, it just makes me wonder if that is something that will, one, be doable, and then, two, will it give us the information we want? Because sometimes a teacher or, say here, FFA sponsor, they may not exactly know what pots of money, or maybe they do, and maybe I've misunderstood it, but like if this is coming from the general fund, and what area of the general fund, or if a portion of it is coming from the general fund, and then the principal's budget, or, you know, those types of things. And so I certainly support having the information, and I do think it will be critical for us to start looking at all of the actions and how they impact the budget. And I just don't know that this would be something that would be doable. And I don't know, maybe it is. I haven't spoken with any of these individuals, but I don't want students to suffer, and I don't want teachers not to feel that they know how or can do this, and then things to be delayed.
If I may, wait for the call on it.
Let me just ask one process question, and then I'll, I'll circle, I'll yield the floor to you, Ms. Davis. From a process perspective, I guess I assumed that these executive summaries were compiled information from the teacher's application for the field trip, and then perhaps Mr. Greiner and his office kind of plugging in the dollars, and then perhaps the Office of Student Achievement going... So this executive summary is all of the data information that's provided by the teachers when they apply for the field...
So this executive summary is all of the data information that's provided by the teachers when they apply for the field trip?
Yes, so the schools have to submit the request form and they have to complete all the information to let us know what's happening with the field trip. Now they may have to reach out to different departments to get information to go in there when it comes to adding some approximate cost associated with it. Typically, the cost that schools might face is really going to be the transportation. When we're thinking about the cost for chaperones, sometimes chaperones are free depending upon where they're going. The companies will ensure that chaperones don't have to pay costs for entry into different locations. Or if there is a cost for chaperones, then schools will cover that. But it does come from different funding sources, it may be their LSGT grant, it may be PTO. Sometimes it is through the fundraising or it's through the principal's account that they're using to actually cover that cost. And so I would recommend that to give you all a general understanding of the costs that are absorbed from whatever funding from the district, that we just ask them to give an approximate. Or they note the, the things that the school would have to cover and the funding source that they would use to do that. Because the thing that would be the hardest for them to gather and know would be the transportation cost. Because a lot of times they don't know that until after the fact, when they're billed for it. Because they have to be billed for the driver cost as well as the mileage.
Understood, thank you for explaining that. I had a completely wrong assumption about how this document is prepared. All right, Ms. Davis?
And so that, that kind of takes me to what started this conversation. Why is this a line item on the, on the board to approve if we don't know that it hits the threshold for requiring board approval? So again, I just wanna get us to a place where I'm very sensitive to the feedback that I get from my constituents that, you know, we don't seem to have a handle on what it costs to do the, do the work of the district. So I want us to, again, if this doesn't require the board to approve field trips, why is that a line item on here? Because again, if it's being handled within the local school budgets and we approve the local school budgets, then it makes sense. But this always, when I see something, I'm assuming it's because it hit a cost threshold for what the board is required to approve. Am I wrong in that assumption? Because if I am, then you can, you can help me clarify that.
I believe it's our board policy to approve field trips. Exactly.
So we approve overnight field trips? Based on the fact that they submitted that to us without any impact on the budget whatsoever, right? Is that the assumption that if it came forward to us, that the school has already covered it in their budgets? Because you don't have to give me this information, if that's a yes, then we're simply approving the fact that we're sending kids overnight to another place? I really need anything else.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis. I think my, my only thought, and this is not to spar back and forth, I just wanna be clear. I'm, I'm just trying to process also what the request is. So if, if I'm confused about how this works, then let me know. When we talk about the budget and approve the budget in the previous year for the upcoming year, there's line items in there for how much money the school gets out of the general fund? How much money LSGT will get out of whatever fund? And that part is what the board approves. And then using that pot of money, the school and the district, hand in hand, sort of decide how that money will then be sparsed out throughout the school year. So we're not at the part of approving the budget saying, oh, well, this particular line item is to approve a 4-H field trip. No, what we're saying is this particular line item is to approve all of the field trips combined as long as they don't exceed what's on this particular line item of the budget. That's how I understand it, but if I'm wrong, please let me know.
Yeah, that, that is correct. The only, so also in the budget, there is a transportation as line, the transportation piece is also in the budget. So transportation has a line item, which we're kind of simplifying a little bit more this year where it just has general trips and then it has athletic trips, so y'all can just see. So instead of having like 20 pages, we're $100 here. It's all estimates based on prior years anyhow. And then that revenue actually shows up in the other local miscellaneous revenue. That's when the schools pay back the transportation part of those trips. So that's the transportation piece, that is correct. The schools get money to an operating budget that's based on FTE. Though I will say on field trips, most of that is, you know, they're, they're working through some, a lot of those are covered. The school does cover some of them, I know that does happen. But a lot of times the parents are covering those field trips as well. But, but LSGT also, they will write grants for specific trips as well. But I don't know, Dr. Scott, I'm not sure if any of those are really student, maybe a few for LSGT?
What you typically see LSGT writing grants for are like your fifth grade trips to Jekyll or to the 4-H centers. Then we do have some elementary schools that do use their LSGT funds to help support those 4-H trips that are overnight trips.
And a lot of times the schools also typically, they can use their, they have operating budgets within the school as well, outside of what the general fund provides. That could be in their undesignated funds where they may use that. I don't think that happens often, but they do use some, sometimes they use those funds to cover any differences that might be. Did that help, Dr. Anderson?
Yes, it did, it did, it did. And, and so I don't, I don't have any other questions, but Ms. Davis, if you wanna continue to, to keep it pulled for a separate.
Oh, no, we don't have to pull it. Again, I'm, I'm trying to get to what is it that we are approving? And so giving us that policy reference, if you would just put that on that, when you send the field trip thing to us, that, you know, this is because of policies, whatever, overnight studying, then I won't be looking for cost and things that I need to have an impact on, so that would be excellent.
Oh, okay.
And so if they're not overnight, then we don't need to see them, is that right? That would be so excellent.
Okay. Hope, okay, I'm, I'm hoping that sort of everything, all the trips fell where they, where they were. Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Davis. And thank you all for that exercise in, in patience with the questions that I had. G, Early Visionaries Academy Charter School application. As you know, we have to discuss and approve charter school petitions for, in the district. Are there questions, Ms. Denson?
I would like to pull this, remove this item from consent along with also, I would like to remove H, the Visionary Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship Charter School of Application.
Okay, and are there specific questions that you have? Or comments or statements that you would like for, on the record for this particular item?
I do not see the community benefit of, of these applications at this time. And I do not plan on supporting them, so I don't want them on consent.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on this particular item? Dr. Gant?
Similar to Mr. Denson, I know, and I thank you, Dr. Hooker, for sort of synthesizing everything into that, you know, those recommendations. But I would agree that, given where we are, which is, we're not sure, or where we're going with just budgetary things and vouchers and, you know, there are other variables that I think we're going to have to talk about more and more, honestly, over the next, maybe several years. And so while it seems like there were some, like, Dr. Hooker, you and your team outlined some of the strengths, I just think right now it probably would not be, I, I, I would not feel comfortable as a steward of the, or as a team, as a part of a team who's responsible for a sort of stewardship over where, you know, funds are going to support this. I did have a question as I was reading through and I didn't, it's not urgent, but I know we had, we took action, I think, on either one or two other charter schools last year, I think?
Yes, Movement Academy and there was another one, I can't remember.
Okay, do you know if there are any, I mean, I don't know that they're obligated to give updates to their local school districts, but do you know, Dr. Hooker, have you heard anything about like the development or where they are with those? Or?
I believe one, if I'm, correct me, team, because we discussed this at Cabinet, I believe one has received charter state, status from the state, that's the Movement. The others, I do not believe have received any approval from the state.
Okay. And I do, I do remember briefly seeing some blips of advertisement, I don't know if you can call it advertisement, announcements on social media for Movement Academy around this time last year. And then everything that I saw just kind of vanished after about a month and I have not heard anything since. Are there other thoughts or questions?
So we're just the first point in their application to become a charter system, right? They have to come through us, we have to either approve or deny. And then it goes on to a state, absolutely. And so, yeah, that's how I treat these requests, thank you.
Okay, other thoughts? Yes, Dr. Jaeger, and I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm just curious about the memo that was attached to the second one. It's dated March 13th and it seems to say that we've already voted unanimously to deny. That seems a little odd.
That's an error that we can correct, it's not a, we. Did you hear that? It's a sample letter to show what would be sent to the state.
Okay, thank you.
If it's denied.
Oh, okay, so similar to the resolution, you get the language so you can see it, okay. Ms. Bagby?
So if what I'm understanding is the Early Visionary Academy Charter, Charter Application and the Visionary Academy Leadership and Entrepreneurship Charter School Application, they act request permission or petition us? And when we say yes or no, are we granting them money as well?
No, ma'am, we're not granting them money, but it gives them access to public school funds like, like we get. So they, they will get money for each student that's enrolled in their program that lives in our district. And that money is essentially pulled from the money that the district would be getting if that student were enrolled in our district. And I think that there may be some additional expenses like transportation and other things that we potentially have to share with a charter school because they're essentially in our district and functioning as a quasi-public school. Does that, is that, I don't know if I made all that up or not.
You did not make it up, that's correct. And so in a charter application, they can request that as a part of that charter, that we would provide the transportation for their students. So you're absolutely correct.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Bagby?
And are they, do they get Title I funding? Do they get the special ed funding? Do they get everything that the other, our public schools get?
I, I don't know, Ms., Dr. Scott, can you answer that question?
So they would be privy to any of our QBE funding. When it comes to the title funding, all of that, I am not sure what they would get from the title funding. But special ed funding is QBE funding as well. So if they have students that meet the eligibility requirements and are receiving those services, then they would get special education funding.
Thank you.
All right, other, other questions, thoughts?
Okay, so this wakes me up again to think about, you know, I hadn't, I hadn't looked at the charter requirements before a while. But there is just, you're right, it's based on what they ask for, right? But by law, what are we required to do to support a charter in our, in our district, right? Because what I, what I recall from our earlier discussions is that they can be selective about the students that they enroll because it's their school, they're making their rules. And, and so they don't have to take special, they don't have to take special needs. But if they do, then does the district now have to take that money and, and share with them? I don't remember us having that part of the conversation. I do know that, that the experience had been, especially in some of the school districts that I've, I've heard from at the different conferences that we go to, is that they will take the students, but only the students that they can service without any special needs. And they don't necessarily have a, a program to support all, all children, just certain children. And then those children can come back to us, if I'm not mistaken. And I might be confusing two things, but yeah, that's a piece of it that I recall.
Okay, were there other questions or comments on? I'm assuming we can combine H and G since they're, they have the same energy? No? Okay, you wanna pull them, okay. So we'll pull both individually and vote on them. Okay, now we are at I, approval of the FY '25 Workers' Comp Annual Reconciliation. Questions? Is that a question, Ms. Davis, or an okay?
It is a question.
Yes, Ms. Davis?
So I believe that was the, from the underpayment of the working, the underpayment for workman's comp. Was that found in the audit that was done for us?
So when the numbers are submitted to the state, and it's all on an online form, they review them. And in their review, they are attributing the 117-990-351 number as what was reported.
Right.
And so due to that underpayment, we owe, so that our coverage matches our payroll, the additional amount.
So that triggered for me the question of, we, we may have sent it in as an estimate, but at the end of the year, do our estimates get synced up and reconciled so that people know what we owe them? And is that how they found that? Because we've had a financial audit and I don't know that, that we see, would this be discovered in our financial audit?
So this is separate from that audit. It, it's a yearly premium that we pay, like you pay car insurance.
Right.
And so because the two numbers are so different, to me, it doesn't scream an entry error as much as a transcription error, but not really sure where that occurred at. The numbers are generated here, of course, in finance. I enter them, it goes to the state, they record it, they transcribe, and then they send the bill. There was a discrepancy somewhere in the chain.
Thank you.
Are there other questions on this item? Okay, are we, are we pulling this item?
I don't think, I don't think there's anything to pull. I would, I do want to understand though, how if we submitted, how, first of all, how was this discrepancy discovered? Because if we submitted it for 117, somebody had to reconcile that we spent that other, you know, $300,000. And so obviously that's what caused them to send us a bill for the remainder. But is this the first time it's happened? Or I'm just trying to understand what's breaking down for us that we're seeing this kind of error? That's not quite a, that's at least a, what, a quarter of a million, a little over a quarter of a million dollars?
I think it's like 35 million is the difference there. And again, like I said, to me, it doesn't scream an entry error, that's a transcription error. Like the whole number is different. And so it's hard to know because we don't retain the worksheet that goes to the state, it's an online form. If I had the worksheet, I could tell you, like, yeah, that was just, you know, the wrong number guy copied. But they also do a transcription as well, so it could have happened on their end. And that's not pointing fingers, that's just saying it's hard to know in the chain where the breakdown was.
Well, we, we keep arranging things and so, and I don't have, I'm not privy to how things are handled, but I mean, these are the kinds of things that you, it's, it's a small error this time, but if, if there's a process that we're dropping here, we missed, then I would want us to be alert to that.
So I will tell you, we did use their number this year, so there's no confusion about the amounts.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, I, I'm hearing that it's not gonna get pulled, you just had, y'all just had some questions. Okay, so we have the following items off the consent agenda. B Personnel, C Contract List, G Early Visionaries Academy, and H Visionaries Academy of Leadership. B Personnel, C Contract List, G Early Visionaries Academy, and H Visionaries Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship.
I'd love for us to have just a, a public vote on, on the pre-K furniture thing. That's the positive thing on this list, that, that's really exciting, that, that something really good is going to be happening for our two early learning centers, and, and we're not having to pay for it. I think that's awesome. It's a gift to our children.
Okay. So, you would like to pull it for a...
A separate vote on that? Yes, please.
Separate vote. Okay. I, I do want to discourage us from, from those types of practices. When we go to the GSBA trainings on how to conduct board meetings, that's, that's not, that's not recommended as a best practice. So, I, I want to just kind of put out there for the board that I would discourage us from, 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 from doing that. Okay. So, for this time, let's go ahead and pull the, the perch, the furniture purchase. But once again, I want to discourage this.
Well, thank you for sharing that. If I had known that, I would not have pursued that, that line. But again, I think it's important for our community to know when we're getting help from agencies and, and who's helping us. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We are now at executive session. So, we need a vote? We need a motion?
I saw move that we go into executive session.
I need a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Davis, seconded by Mr. Denson. And we are moving into executive session to discuss, yes, to, to discuss or deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Thank you all.
The time is seven o'clock and we want to respect your time. So we'll go ahead and get started with our evening's agenda for our March 13th Board Meeting. Item one is to call the meeting to order. We have what looks like a quorum, so we'll just roll down to item two. Roll call Superintendent Hooker.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Heidi Hensley. Ms. Mary P. Bagby. Ms. Linda Davis. Dr. Patricia Jaeger. Mr. Tim Denton. Dr. Mombi Anderson. Dr. Lakeisha Gant. Ms. Nicole Hole. And Mr. Mark Evans.
Okay, we have a quorum and can move on with our agenda. Next up is item three, Silent Meditation and Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with our silent meditation moment. Thank you. And now we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is to the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do not know my left and my right, so you'll have to pardon me. All right, we will move on to item four, our awards and recognitions. Dr. Moore.
All right. Do you have the clicker? Thank you. Got so excited with the music, I'm having trouble getting this thing out. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Hooker. Good evening, board members. As we get started on our recognitions this evening, we want to acknowledge that March is both Youth Art Month and Music in Our Schools Month. CCSD recognizes the value and importance of music and arts education for all children. We celebrate our many, many talented students who display their talents through the visual arts, music, and theater, as well as the excellent work of our many outstanding art and music educators throughout the district, whose knowledge and support spark creativity, imagination, and career inspirations, leaving a lasting impact on our students. Earlier tonight, we were pleased to be joined in the lobby by members of the Clark Central High School Percussion Ensemble for their performance under the direction of Mr. Christopher Simpson. Mr. Simpson and members of that group, and I believe it is also led by Jordan Raisin. If, Mr. Simpson, I believe you are still here and members of that group, please stand and let's give them another round
Good evening, everyone. The time is seven o'clock and we want to respect your time. So we'll go ahead and get started with our evening's agenda for our March 13th Board Meeting. Item one is to call the meeting to order. We have what looks like a quorum, so we'll just roll down to item two. Roll call Superintendent Hooker.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Heidi Hensley, Ms. Mary P. Bagby, Ms. Linda Davis, Dr. Patricia Jaeger, Mr. Tim Denton, Dr. Mombi Anderson, Dr. Lakeisha Gant, Ms. Nicole Hole, and Mr. Mark Evans.
Okay, we have a quorum and can move on with our agenda. Next up is item three, Silent Meditation and Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with our silent meditation moment. And now we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance and the flag is to the right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not know my left and my right, so you'll have to pardon me. All right, we will move on to item four, our awards and recognitions. Dr. Moore.
All right. Do you have the clicker? Got so excited with the music, I'm having trouble getting this back in. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Hooker. Good evening, Board members. As we get started on our recognitions this evening, we want to acknowledge that March is both Youth Art Month and Music in Our Schools Month. CCSD recognizes the value and importance of music and arts education for all children. We celebrate our many, many talented students who display their talents through the visual arts, music, and theater, as well as the excellent work of our many outstanding art and music educators throughout the district, whose knowledge and support spark creativity, imagination, and career inspirations, leaving a lasting impact on our students. Earlier tonight, we were pleased to be joined in the lobby by members of the Clark Central High School Percussion Ensemble for their performance under the direction of Mr. Christopher Simpson. Mr. Simpson and members of that group, and I believe it is also led by Jordan Raisin. If, Mr. Simpson, I believe you are still here and members of that group, please stand and let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so much. That really was wonderful, a wonderful way to end the day and start the meeting. We also want to remind you that CCSD's annual Youth Art Month Exhibition is now on public display at the University of Georgia Lamar Dodd School of Art through April the 11th. Please join us on Sunday, March 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Art School for a reception celebrating our many talented student artists. Now, on to our award recognitions for this evening. Do you have some more batteries? We'll start with three Clark Central High School students who have recently received medals in the State Skills USA Competition. Skills USA is a national nonprofit that serves middle school, high school, and college post-secondary students preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. It seeks to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. We are pleased to be joined tonight by these three students. I'll ask each of you to come up to the stage as I call your name. Receiving a gold medal in computer programming for the second year in a row, so this will be a familiar face for you, and once again qualifying for the Skills USA National Competition this summer, along with silver medal in math applications, we have Grayson Kraus. Grayson? I will ask you to stay there as you're joined by your colleagues. Receiving a gold medal in technical computer applications and also qualifying for the national competition, we have Junior Zach Bergman. Zach? And receiving a silver medal in the Internet of Things category, we have sophomore Dan Bray. At this time, we'd also like to ask Clark Central Skills USA Faculty Advisor John Walker, Dr. Swayed Huff Principal, to come up for a photo, and we'll ask our board to come forward to join that photo.
Thank you, Dr. Huff, for walking to the stage. We appreciate it.
Dr. Huff thought that was an invitation, didn't he? All right, now you, where's Dr. Huff? Come on up, yep, come on up. And Board members, if you will come on up for a photo as well, that would be terrific. It's a tough crowd tonight. Parents, feel free, if you'd like to come up and get more photos, you are welcome to do so. We'll also be posting some online. Can you get it? All right, there we go. We're gonna get this.
All right, look over here on three, one, two, three.
Thank you all so much. Next, we'd like to recognize one of our brightest shining stars in CCSD, who I don't think has made it here tonight, but she did confirm, so hopefully she will come in before we read about her. But we're gonna go ahead and recognize her. We know that you've heard this name before, Kinyah Gonzalez Chavez. Kinyah has received many awards, recognitions, and honors during her time at CCSD. And most recently, she was among 21 high school students across the state selected for the 2025 Georgia Youth Leadership Awards. The annual awards are given by 21st Century Leaders, Georgia's premier youth leadership and workforce readiness program, for high school students from diverse backgrounds. Kinyah currently holds a 4.0 grade point average and ranks 13th in her class of more than 400 students. Now, as I said, we are having a night tonight. As I said, Kinyah has not made her way here yet, but when she comes in, we will make sure that she stops and says hello to you all, so that you can congratulate her on her wonderful work. And we'll try to get her back next time. I hope that she is okay. All right, let's move on to our Employee of the Month for this month, Sarah Lockman. Sarah, I know you're here because I saw your shining face. Come on up. Just gonna stand right up there. Now, I'm gonna make you real uncomfortable for a few minutes as I say really wonderful things about you, and I know from meeting you just for a few minutes that you're gonna love that, right? So our Employee of the Month is Ms. Sarah Lockman, 4th grade teacher at Whitehead Road Elementary School. Ms. Lockman, thank you for being here tonight. Ms. Lockman is a veteran CCSD educator who is now in her fourth year at Whitehead Road. She was nominated by her ESOL collaborator at Whitehead Road, Ms. Christelle Duncan, whose daughters had Ms. Lockwood as an ELE teacher last year. Ms. Duncan writes, "I already knew that Ms. Lockman was a great teacher based on how much my daughters improved in her class and how well they spoke of her. Last year, as my daughters were nearing the end of their time with Ms. Lockman in the first grade, my husband jokingly begged her to teach in 5th grade so she could continue to teach our children. Isn't that the type of teacher everyone wants for their own children? This year, I've had the pleasure of witnessing her instruction firsthand. The manner in which she speaks to children is soul-caring, encouraging, direct, and respectful. The classroom climate that she has created is safe and loving, but also has extremely high expectations with a true belief that everyone in the class can achieve. She is prepared and organized in her planning of lessons and delivers content in such an engaging manner. It is apparent that she loves the work and believes in the education of every student who walks in her door. Thank you for that. My time in her classroom as a collaborator has proven to be just as rewarding as I had presumed it would be. I have learned so much from her and am happy to be part of the work she does daily. The students at Whitehead Road Elementary School are lucky to have her. The faculty and staff are blessed to be able to collaborate with her. The parents and community are fortunate to reap the benefits of the pure magic that happens in that room. And I have been lucky, fortunate, and blessed enough to experience it all. I hear you're also an excellent pastry chef." Please join me in congratulating our Employee of the Month, Sarah Lockman, and we'll have, we'd like to invite at this time any of your friends, family, or colleagues from Whitehead Road Administration or staff to come on up for a photo. As we always do, when we walked into the classroom, it was apparent immediately that Ms. Lockman is just loved. Her students were so excited for her. As always, we want to thank the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce for their continued partnership in our Employee of the Month program and for supplying the Employee of the Month gift bag, which you have and can take home, which has lots and lots of goodies from local businesses. Thank you very much. Now, you can go sit down. I know that was not easy for you. Thank you. And as a reminder, we again want to encourage everyone in our community to nominate any full-time employee with at least one year of service. You can follow the link on the screen or go to our website. And finally tonight, we want to recognize you, our board, as part of School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. This week, districts around the state have been celebrating the dedication and leadership of their school board members who volunteer their time and efforts to ensure that districts are best positioned to deliver a quality education for all students. You play an important role in helping us advance the mission of CCSD to create educational journeys that empower all students to fulfill their potential. We thank you for your dedicated service to the community and for your continued advocacy of public education. We know it's a lot of work and we appreciate you very much. Thank you. Now, this includes our recognitions for March. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Anderson and the board for any recognitions you all might have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moore, and congratulations, everyone, and thank you so much for that amazing performance. I think the whole board was so pleased at being invited to listen to you all and your wonderful music. So, we are ready to move on to our next agenda items. Guests, you're welcome to leave if you do not want to participate in our regular board meeting. Certainly welcome to say goodbye. Next up is item five, public, sorry, do the board members have any recognitions that they would like to share with?
I would like to share something.
Yes, Ms. Bagby?
This is a platform that I won't be speaking a lot on. I'll just be paying attention to what I need to be doing. However, this is March and it's Women's Appreciation Month for all the successful women and just to encourage us, as well as it is Girl Scout Month. And so since I am still a Girl Scout at age 75, I'd like to share the pledge and the promise that we gave when I was about 10 years old. And so it says that on my honor, I would do my duty for God and my country, to help other people at all times, and to obey the Girl Scout law. And so I have lived that since I was about 10 years old. And it says that I'm supposed to have courage, be accountable for my actions, be accountable for all the things I do, help everybody, anybody, anytime that I can, and with integrity and dignity. And I just want y'all to know that I am a dad deal because Girl Scout, I have all my Girl Scout colors. When I was, when I was, began to be a Girl Scout and a Brownie, my mother found a Girl Scout dress for me at the secondhand store, second, and for 50 cents. Even though I couldn't participate in all of the Girl Scout activities, the trips and everything, I still held that promise dear, and it has carried me through life, to have honor and to do my duty to God and my country and to help other people at all times and to obey that law. And I just want to continue that and know that everybody is obligated and accountable. And I just want to thank you for acknowledging that this is Girl Scout Month.
Anyone else have any recognitions? Mr. Denton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to do a recognition for our fantastic librarians here in Clark County School District who did some amazing programs for the Read Across America Week. I know a lot of us got to go and read at some of the schools. It's honestly probably the coolest part of getting to be on the school board is going to, reading to all those classes and to get to see how the fantastic work that our media specialists do and how much those students love those media specialists and what they do. So just wanted to bring that up. And also just, you know, appreciation of all the educators here in Clark County. Right now, you know, I think a lot of educators and people in educational work are feeling attacked, and for good reason, by what's happening to the Department of Education. And, you know, I think that this, this board, though, I know myself, I can speak for myself at least, like, we stand with educators and we appreciate what they do, so.
All right, thank you. Others? Okay. All right, we are now ready to move on to item five, and that is our public comment. I have a list, yes, here we are, of, I have a list here of speakers who have signed up by our noon deadline on the day of our meetings. We appreciate you doing that. And let me see if I can find the script. Ms. Palmer, do you have a copy? Of the script?
Oh, I have it, I have it. I'm sorry. It is amongst all my debris. Okay, so before we get started with public comment, just want to read out our policy BCBI, which states, "Each individual speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. At this point, remarks must be concluded. No speaker will indulge in personal attacks and all comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. No individual or group shall be retaliated against in any manner for speaking during public participation. Personal concerns may be addressed in writing to the Superintendent and the President of the Board of Education. Written copies of comments may be provided to the Board. At a board meeting, board members will not respond to questions or comments from the public. The district may respond to public comment as needed or appropriately within 10 working days. And lastly, the use of obscene, profane, vulgar, physically threatening, or abusive remarks will not be allowed. Loud, boisterous conduct or comments by speakers or members of the audience are also not allowed." All right, we will start with our first speaker, Walter Swanson.
My name is Walter Swanson, and I've got three grandchildren that go to Follow Drive Elementary School. The grandchildren, their parents, and I are happy, but we're not happy about having three different principals in five years. I was a weekly classroom volunteer in 1st grade for, for the 1st principal, please fingerprinted and background checked and so forth. Then came COVID, and I had to stop. The next year, I homeschooled the twins in 1st grade. I had taught 1st grade for 13 years. I taught public school for 33 years in the same county in Florida. I was also president of the Broward NEA in Florida for two years. I found two things to make better and more enthusiastic teachers. One is that they liked their principal, and two is that they had smaller class sizes. But having three principals in five years is not good. Why is this? Why will you, will you tell us? What is the official reason? The only reason that most of the public can think of would be that one of them's having problems and needed to be changed. I'm sure you'll give a different reason, but does it matter? Three principals in five years is not good for the children or the school. Transfer Ms. Gonzalez out of a 50% Hispanic school doesn't make sense. Why? 91% minority school it is. You should have a good reason. Two new principals, switching schools, doesn't make sense, not to me, not after the current principal's been only there for two and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shalita Neal.
Stuck together for the three minute. My name is Shalita Neal. I'm actually cosplaying myself. I was the co-captain for Cedar Shoals Basketball Team in 200... Trying to get my black. Pulled it out of storage. So I am born at Shoals Bear, Koala, Hillsman Panther, and Jaguar. And I am a first-generation college student. I grew up in Nellie Bee, Vine Street, Garnet Ridge, and Spring Valley. I went to, and I'm a stroke survivor, by the way, I actually had five strokes when I was 32. I lost my speech and my right side, but before that, I was an educator for Cobb County. So, and Mary other city schools, which is in, in Cobb County, but it's a separate district. And that is why I came to talk to you guys, just to tell you about... just to tell you about what I've learned from working at four different districts 'cause I'm back home now. I heard that you guys used to do IB, um, International Backlit Program. Go back to that. That, that, I would just research Marietta City Schools because they have a charter district just like Clark County School District. Their school spirit is how we are with UGA. It's like that with the school district. Like, how we are with GoDogs, that's Blue Devil energy. And so, even with, um, just the district in itself, um, my former, as, as a matter of fact, my first, um, principal, Dayton Hibs, has Tourette Syndrome. And now he is the Director for Human Resources for Marietta City Schools. So, they like to hire within. Before I run out of time, 'cause I, um, I do have a problem with us going out of the district when there are multiple people that is qualified that live here.
Thank you.
All right, and I don't know if you...
Did you want to give us copies of the, were those copies for, for board members that you had?
Oh, no, these are my programs.
Oh, I understand.
So, if you ever go to a game, then remember the cheerleaders use the cell program. So, I went into storage and, um, just brought, 'cause I'm also a historian.
Sorry, I was, I was just asking if you could, if you wanted to leave them, you could leave them, but, but the time is, uh...
I will, I will send a copy of this.
Okay.
I was on the front page when the school was built.
Okay.
And I said painted orange and blue.
Thank you, thank you. Up next, we have Lisa King.
Hi, I'm Lisa King. I've taught at CCSD for seventeen of my twenty years in education. I've worked at a total of seven elementary schools under twelve different principals. I'm here today to honor and thank Pam Garcia for what she created at Fowler Drive. In the past four years at Fowler Drive, she's completely turned around both the school climate and ac- academic trajectory of our school. To be sure, she hasn't done it alone. The entire staff supports teachers, from the front office and instructional coaches to the custodians and cafeteria staff. We have all shared her enthusiasm and vision every step of the way. Ms. Garcia has grown Fowler into something resembling a dream school and it has been an amazing experience. Kids are happy, staff are happy, families are happy. People who visit and do walkthroughs at Fowler always comment on how warm and positive our school is. We are a community, our families love us and we love them back thanks to Garcia finding so many ways to knit us together. Plus, our kids are learning. It sounds too good to be true, it was certainly too good to last. She's being transferred to another school, an attempt to maybe sprinkle her magic there as well. We are heartbroken. It's been a tough pill for many of us to swallow because Garcia is the heart of Fowler Drive and our heart is being removed. Feels like a cold decision and the delivery of the news to us could not have been done in a colder and less considerate way. All of us together make the magic, instructional coaches holla. But she's the one, she's the one who relit the flame at Fowler Drive. Things will undoubtedly change as personnel are inevitably shifted to other places. We'll be okay, but it won't be the same. Synergy isn't something that can be replicated. I don't expect these words to reverse decisions, but I hope that in the future, when administrators are digging through numbers and spreadsheets, they will keep in mind that some school staff are teens and families and friends and the quality of our lives is directly related to the conditions of our workplace, the place we spend the most time and energy. We're not cogs or chess pieces, we are human. Feels like we were winning a race and then our own team tripped us. I particularly want to thank Garcia for being the solitary reason I came back to the classroom after a spectacular burnout in this district. I just want to take this opportunity to say out loud that I've been part of something amazing, something I've never experienced in a school before, all because of Pam Garcia. Want to say thank you and I hope all your magic delivers the same results at JJ Harris.
Thank you. Sydney Walters? Sorry, Sydney, Sydney Waters, sorry.
Good evening. I am Sydney Waters and I am here on behalf of the Athens Tutorial Program. I am a board member of this program and our honorable leader, John Jeffries, could not be here this evening, but he sends his regards. I am here for the board to, to reach out and support this program. We're coming to our physical close of, of this year. And to be honest, we need money to continue this program. Anybody listening online or in this room could also contribute to this program. Those of you who are not familiar with it, we have been serving the students of Clark County since nineteen eighty-one. We are an after-school program, working with students right now in Gaines School and Howard Stroud Elementary. We have a ninety-six percent, uh, uh, success in the students that we work with. We use only certified teachers from that school to work after school, two hours a day for two days a week for eight months. We work with about, right now, eighty-five students per school, which is close to twenty percent of the student body. And I think having a ninety percent success rate of bringing students on grade level in English and Math is a definite success story. We are, we are, we're not asking for handouts. We're asking for contributions to help us, help you. To help, so that you can help us, so you can, so we're asking for help from you so we can help the students of Clark County. Please consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Benny Coleman. Ms., Ms. Palmer, do you mind grabbing the document? Thank you.
I'm ready.
Just give us a second, she's, she's our clock starter, so.
Well, hello. My name is Benny Lee Coleman III. I live at two seven, I live at two seventy-one Rose Drive. I stand before you, Athens Clark County School Board, giving, earning respect to you all. But I have a few questions. Question one, why must parents draw a lottery ticket in order for their children to attend pre-K? Two, how much money does the Athens Clark County School Board have on hand for pre-K and kindergarteners? Three, how much money is being spent on pre-K and kindergarten? Four, how much does it cost to run pre-K and kindergarten? Five, what is the number, no percentage, please, no percentage, of Black kids receiving pre-K and kindergarten help? Six, are there any program records, running inventory or data in the past, present, or for the future of kids in or entering pre-K and kindergarten? What is the number, no percentage, amount of Black kids that need to be in pre-K and kindergarten? Four, and the eight, the final question, what is the classification of pre-K and kindergarten kids? I, Benny Lee Coleman III, would like in writing within ten days the answers to his Benny Lee Coleman III question. Please do not refer me Benny Lee Coleman to the website or any other avenue for the answer. Thank you all.
Thank you. That, from what I can see on this list, concludes our public comment for the evening. And we are now ready to move to item six. Pardon me. Okay, yes, to item six and that is to adopt the agenda as presented. I move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Second. Okay, that motion made by Dr. Yeager, seconded by Ms. Davis, all in favor, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we are ready to continue. Superintendent Hooker, do you have a report for us for item seven?
Yes, ma'am. March is filled with recognitions of people and programs that make our district shine. We're honored, we honored Music in Our Schools Month with musical performance earlier and we will honor Youth Art Month with an exhibition at the University of Georgia Lamar Dodd School of Art later this month that I hope you'll be able to attend. March is also Gifted Education Month, Middle Education Month, and National Nutrition Month. At last week, we also observed National, National Schools Social Worker Week, National Foreign Language Exchange Week, and National Breakfast Week. Congratulations to the students who were honored tonight as well as to our employee of the month, Ms. Sarah Lockman, fourth grade teacher at Whitehead Elementary. I'd like to remind you that Clark Central High School will host the Anne Frank, A History for Today, with an opening reception on Thursday, March the twentieth, from six to seven PM. Thank you to Ms. Megan McNeely for bringing this exhibition to our students who will serve as docents for the event. For complete information, visit Facebook website. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. Up next, we've got our reports, uh, starting with our facilities updates.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board and the Clark County School District executives. See if I can figure this out again. All right, tonight's, uh, presentation will be on the BAS programs. You guys have seen a lot and helped us so much with other projects, but this one is another one that's near and dear to my heart. The BAS system is the Building Automation System. It sounds simple, it sounds easy, it's very complex and I still don't understand everything, but I'm learning. The Building Automation Systems run all of our air conditioners. Every unit in the district, with maybe exception of two or three, actually are on some form of BAS program. Uh, I'll, I'll not bother to read the slide, you've got it there. I want to go on through the program and talk about the Samsung controls. These are some new ones that we have gotten just this week. The older, uh, versions of Building Automation Systems, someone will come in and set a blanket over all of your air conditioner units and have them all talk to a single computer. That single computer is just like your home computer. After three, four, five years of use, it will break, it will slow down, it will cause you to say things you probably shouldn't. Uh, these newer, uh, emerging technologies we're having in air conditioning, the manufacturers have started putting their own kind of control system in there. So, that kind of left us with no need to bring in these big blanket companies where we can run the manufacturer's already pre-installed program. That saves us money on the construction side when they come through. It saves us a lot of time. Uh, the unit that I'm probably most proud of right now is the Pelican. I have learned to drive this system pretty, pretty quickly, it's pretty simple. This particular system is on my cellphone as an app. I click, I hit the building and boom zoom, what room do you want to look at? That is incredible. When I get a phone call and I'm driving down the road, I can pull off into a parking lot and go, oh, well, there's so-and-so's gym unit and let me look at it and let's see what it's doing. That is incredible response. That helps us, help our users, our stakeholders, our customers, our children stay comfortable in the environments that they're in. I was asked while the, uh, schools on this particular slide are in lowercase, I had to ask the question because I like to learn things. I was told that's actually the URL address that is associated with this manufacturer that it has to be all lowercase or it goes somewhere else and does something different. So, I'm just going to go out with that on the Pelican. We do have some legacy systems that we've put in the last few years. Right now, we have a company called Air Building Technologies. They have taken over some of the legacy systems. As our technologies have increased over the years, we've got some systems that are so close to greatness, it's not funny. We've had to kind of walk away from, uh, a previous, uh, previous vendor on this project and we found these guys and what these guys have done is helped us secure the license. So, going forward, we're no longer bound to proprietary. That's a word I don't like, proprietary repairs and equipment. So, this is, this is going to be great moving forward with us. It's going to help us keep the buildings environmentally sound. Right now, Air Building came in, uh, we've got them at, what is that, six buildings? By the time we're done this summer, we hope to have that list almost doubled. We've kind of split the district in half with some going with Pelican and some going with Air Building. I, I really appreciate your time, I really appreciate you supporting us on this. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions from members? Ms. Davis?
Yeah, oh, I didn't mount that one. So, my, I know last year, right, we went through this whole thing with everybody calling and reporting things down. With this new system that you have, you now have these reports ahead of time. All of the schools are on that, so we won't get any of those calls next summer.
Ah, well, I'm going to go out on that limb, but I'm going to tell you, they should be greatly reduced. We are improving some of the air conditioning stuff and I'm not going to take Mr. Bassett's thunder on that one. But we have, with your help, replaced some schools this past summer.
That's awesome.
And we want to keep that and our windshield going forward even past this summer.
That's exciting, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Uh, Dr. Yeager?
I was just going to ask if, if all this automation improves the efficiency, the energy efficiency of these systems so they don't overcool or overheat or any of that?
Yes, there's optimized starting. Mind you, I'm an electrician, I was more excited about the sports lighting last month. I'm learning this stuff, it's, it's deep. But there's optimized starts that actually begins to kind of learn the use of the room, the use of the space, and it will begin to correct and turn on sooner or later. Uh, the schedules, we can move them very quickly, very tightly. I had a school call me, uh, yesterday on the way home and I was able to turn his building on as we were racing up the highway. Just a click, go in and boom.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Good evening, board. My name's Troy Bassett, I'm here to give this FOST update. And I'll just start with, uh, Cedar Shoals. We're moving along, we've still got about another six months to go. The first picture you see here, that's the new ROTC building. They've already put the footers in, they were pouring the, uh, on the left side, on my left side, the back retaining wall, should be pouring the slab in the next week or so and then they'll start putting steel... and then they'll start putting steel up in about two weeks. That's the ROTC. This is a new batting cage we've got up temporarily until we build their new hitting facility. So this went in last week for the baseball team, for their season. We'll have a new hitting facility that's split between softball and baseball, that's directly between both fields, that'll actually have four cages in it after the summer's This is the inside of the new concession stand at the stadium, they were actually in there installing all the new equipment today. I think we have a seven or ten team track meet on Saturday that the restrooms in the concession stand will be up and running for that. This is one of the new restrooms in the stadium, new floors, new partitions, they're getting new lighting, new paint, we'll have all new sinks with, and they'll actually be automated versus turning on and leaving on, they're actually censored, so they don't have running water, they're staying on in those. This is the new auto shop, this is pictures from about four days ago, they're actually putting the roof decking on today, so they'll be ready to start putting roof on it next week. Next picture, this is interior of the auto shop, if you look in the back right, that's their new inside classroom. Then the instructor also has, if you look to the left, that's a new office, that actually meets CTA code, the requirements you're supposed to have in any CTA class, you're supposed to have a dedicated classroom, a dedicated lab space, and a dedicated office. So this puts us in compliance with all of those rules and regulations. Okay, next is Clark Middle. We're just about finished, this is a picture of the new gym, students started classes in there a couple weeks ago. Move on to the next picture, if you look on the top of the gym, you can see where the new windows are in, that finished off, that was the last piece we were waving on to complete the gym. Next up, this is the new parking lot, they started, this is the car rider lot, so they started on this, you know, using this traffic pattern about two weeks ago. We've got new parking, dedicated parking for the new health center, which is just inside the door to the left of the gym. One more slide. Oh, and then I guess, in this one, you can't really see it at this size, but we've removed the old, the temporary health center trailers, so we're on the outside, we're complete on Clark Middle's job. There's still a few punch list items, but basically, we're completed Clark Middle. Next, we've started the planning and moving along on Gaines. We met with the new principal, the existing principal, and some adaptive edge staff in the district and the school to finalize some adaptive classroom needs in the building. The architect is finishing up the plans, and we hope to have the RFP go out in May. We plan on moving the twelve classroom modular unit from Cedar Shoals to Gaines this summer, and then start on the new wing at Gaines this fall. And then finally, well, two more things, the district warehouse expansion, we've gotten all of the submittals in, they'll be ready to start digging the foundation next week, and then hope to start directing still there in about three weeks. And then finally, back to Mark's part about the HVAC, we upgraded five schools this summer, we have another five schools that we're upgrading this summer, so that'll have about seventy-five to eighty percent of the district have HVAC systems less than ten years old. Because we, you know, obviously, we replace it when we do a full renovation, all of the systems get replaced, we go with controls, we have sensors in all the rooms. So we're, as far as energy efficiency, we're, you know, about as high as you can go on our buildings with all the controls and systems we have in place to control everything. So that's kind of the update on all the upcoming projects. Any questions?
Are there any questions, Ms. Davis?
Yes, so I've talked to several people in the Gaines School community, and also, I heard from the COC meeting last month. Have they had all of the public meetings for people to come in and see the plans?
We've had the first ones getting to the plans, for the architect to do the plans, but we've still got maybe three more meetings, we'll have the one where we come in and look at all the interior packages, the colors, the carpets, all of that. We did have some of that at a previous, we'll have the meeting where they, I said, I think we have about three more group, I know that they didn't have a big turnout of the one where we had, and open to everybody, so we've asked the new principal to really publicize the next one to get more input from the community.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how, how much they publicized that last meeting.
So is it only publicized within the Gaines School community, or does it hit our district information at all, our calendar?
I mean, I would assume the public information could put that out also, we could add, you know, add some more sources.
That would be great.
The school publicizes it, we put it out, we announce it to the COC when they're coming, so we've got three or four groups, we try to get the information out to as many people as possible.
Sounds great, thank you.
Other questions?
This is not related at all, but having taken auto mechanic in nineteen ninety-five in that Cedar Shoals same building thirty years ago, I, I'm sure that the students appreciate the Renault, so thank you. All right, we are moving on, thank you so much. We are moving on to item ten, our consent agenda, as a reminder to the public, these items were discussed at our work session earlier this evening and were approved to all be voted on as a bundle. Is there a motion on the floor for our consent, our consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion for us to pass our consent agenda.
Okay. Second.
I'm making a motion for us to pass the consent agenda.
Motion made by Mr. Denson and seconded by Dr. Yeager, so items A through D will be voted on. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. And now we are going to our financial updates. First up is our FY twenty-four audit presentation.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Anderson. So you have two audit reports in front of you. The first one was our FY twenty-four audit of our financial statements. Keep in mind, we switched to Malden and Jenkins for this year's audit, the audit field work was completed in December, the report was finalized in January. Happy to report that received unqualified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive on your financial statements, which means they're accurately reported. Also had no findings this year. We had the one finding in fiscal year twenty-three, which we cleared up honestly before the audit report was written last year, so of course, we had to, that finding was taken care of, so we had no additional findings in FY twenty-four. So, and the other is actually, it's the SLOSS performance review, it's not a complete full audit, they basically looked at about fifty, forty-five to fifty percent of our expenditures, eight objectives, happy to report that we had no findings with our SLOSS performance audit, once again. I'll be happy to answer any questions, I know y'all have had the reports for a little over a month, but if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Greiner. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Bagby?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown, people are continuing to ask why we don't have enough teachers or availability for our children to have pre-K, pre-K and kindergarten. With, if we have sixty million dollars in surplus, why do we have to, why do we have to get them to take, pull lottery tickets and not be able to go to school?
That is a great question, Ms. Bagby. Our pre-K program is funded mostly from right from the start. We do contribute roughly, last year was about one point one million from the general fund to supplement. Some of that has to do with, you know, class size, without getting into, a lot of, Dr. Scott may be address this a little bit better than I can, some of it is class size, and then also the funding mechanism where we receive that money from right from the start.
So, as a point of clarification, our students do not have to pull lottery tickets or purchase lottery tickets for pre-K, that's simply the selection, what they're calling the process. And so all students are able to submit an application for a school of their choice, so parents can identify their first, second, and third choice. What they are doing within the lottery process is randomly pulling the names or identifying the names of those who get the slots for the, each one of the schools based upon their choices. And so a parent may not get their first choice, but they may get their second or third choice for their student to attend a pre-K. As it stands right now, we have available seats. Parents, however, may say, I would prefer my child not go to a second or third choice, and will wait on the waiting list to potentially get that first choice that they want for the pre-K seats. And so, at this time, we are not in a space where parents don't have access to pre-K, it's simply that they may not have access to their first, second, or third choice when it comes to the seats for pre-K. When it comes to kindergarten, then kindergarten is available to all students, no matter what, and it's based upon where you live. And so once you hit kindergarten, it's no longer a choice system, kindergarten follows the same rules as all other grade levels, that you would be assigned to the school based upon where you live, and there's available seats for all students to attend kindergarten.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Are there other questions regarding our audit? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greiner. Are you going to stick around for the financial report?
I am right here.
All right, moving on to item B, our financial report and approval.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Anderson. You have before you the financials as of the end of January, which is up the month, off of, seven months into the year. Actual revenues were, again, this is the timing difference of our property taxes, we actually got our money a lot sooner this year than last year, just cash flow wise. So revenues, again, I just use that as a prediction for, so we were about five million less, but if you look at the, the key numbers, our actual revenues are only less than a hundred thousand dollars lower than we thought we'd be with the budgeted amount, so it's just that timing difference. Only actual expenditures, they were roughly about nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand more than budgeted expenditures for the month of January. I've already done the financials for February, that number actually flips, that was just some timing differences as we paid items to accounts payable, so that, that number will, actual expenditures will be less when you see this in February, so they were about one point seven million higher, they're actually closer to a little over, about six hundred thousand when we look at February next month. So again, we're kind of tracking along, and some of those budget expenditures are also hard to predict as well, the timing of some of those. So our fund balance at the end of January was one oh seven, one hundred and seven point five million budgeted, we had about one oh nine, so we're kind of, again, those differences make up that. At the end of February, we're sitting at about ninety-nine million, so we're continuing to trend down, which we know we'll do this time of year, just because the bulk of our, fifty-seven percent of our revenue comes in October, November, and December. So no alarming trends at this time, just kind of tracking along. Remember, we had, with our budget this year, we were taking out, you know, over six million in fund balance, the goal hopefully is we'll take out less than that out of reserves when we finish the year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greiner, do we own this building? Do we own this, do we, and do we own the Board of Education building that was over on Deering? Do we own these properties that we keep moving to?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Well, if we own these buildings, we, why do the children have to pay thirteen thousand dollars to rent something that we already own? Constituents are asking me these things, and I'm asking because they don't have more than three minutes to expound on the things that they need to know. So if we own this building and we own Deering Street, what do we, are we, who are we purchasing property for? Are we, what are we going to do with all this excess property that we have?
Right, I think, and having worked at other school districts, it's common in other school districts, the school districts charge a facility use fee, that covers, you know, our security, our custodial staff working those buildings, it really covers the cost we incur by keeping the facility open after hours. That, if Dr. Hooker would like to chime in on that at all, but I think we've been...
No, thank you, Mr. Greiner, we have a policy that states how we rent our, our facilities, and that's why, as you say, the people are asking, why do we charge thirteen thousand dollars? That was over a period of time, it was not for just one visit. Yes, we own the, the two buildings, and those buildings are being used by our district office, children are in those buildings as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, do we collect a fee from the church that rents this building on Sunday? Because I didn't know that we rent this building out to a church every Sunday, so...
Yes, the church does pay a fee. Any individual who rents our building has to fill out a facilities form, and they are charged.
Right, and we do have, you know, required staff here on Sunday to make sure that it's here with the church when they're in the building as well.
Mr. Greiner, you may not know, but do any of our district personnel know the policies that are specific to our facilities rentals, so that we can refer those policies in this We can reference them?
Yeah, we can.
I think I could address those questions, or do you want specifically from what's written?
Yes, sir.
Specifically from what's written?
Yes.
Okay, I just need to pull it up.
Okay. I, I just think that that might help with sort of clearing up some of the concerns or confusion surrounding facilities rentals, if we are all on the same page with regards to the policy. Policy KG, okay. So if we were to go to Policy KG, use of school facilities, the language is very clear there on which members of the community are charged a facilities rental fee, and what that payment is going to.
Right, and I think if you, looking down, there's a couple regulations that go, oh, that actually has the fee schedule, is actually in the regulation, Dr. Anderson. So it's not specifically in the policy, but there's a separate fee schedule that's attached as a regulation to that Policy KG, there's actually a couple regulations. Right, right, who gets charged, and then the fee schedule is in that regulation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So all that's kind of laid out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were grounded in policy as we have these discussions, because it's important that communities understand that we are sort of using the same policies to guide the decision-making for all community members, and that creates fairness. Other questions? Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Greiner, and let me go back to our meeting. Do we need to make them, oh, okay, I'm so sorry. All right.
Those are the audit, we don't need, one minute on the financials, we do.
Gotcha. All right, so let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion for us to approve the financial report.
Second. All right, the motion made by Mr. Denson, seconded by Dr. Yeager, all in favor, raise your hand high, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion, all opposed, raise your hand, say no. Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, let me go back to these meeting agenda, pardon me. Okay, we are now down to items twelve for individual discussion and vote. The first is the pre-K, pre-K classroom furniture RFP, like to get a motion on the floor? We, we need a motion before any discussion can be had.
I'll make a motion for us to approve the pre-K classroom furniture RFP.
Second. All right. Motion made by Mr. Denson, seconded by Dr. Yeager, the floor is open for discussion. Mr. Denson, would you like to start with any questions that you have, since you made the motion?
Nope, just want to move forward.
Okay. Any others?
Yes, I'd like to thank the staff at the Early Learning Center for getting this award from right from the start, that brings the money into our district to refurbish both of our facilities on the east and the west side, getting that older furniture brought to some very fascinating new furniture that looks like it's going to be fun to have and fun to, for the kids to enjoy, and again, at no cost to the district. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts? Okay, there is a motion on the floor, so let's go ahead and call a vote, all in favor of approving item A, raise your hand high, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Now we're at item B, Early Visionaries Academy Charter School Application. We need a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion for us to deny this application.
Second. All right, motion made by Mr. All right, motion made by Mr. Denson, seconded by Dr. Gant. The floor is open for discussion. Any thoughts, comments? Mr. Denson, you made the motion.
I would like for Mr. Denson to speak into the mic. What do you say when you?
Okay. I would like to make a motion for us to deny the application for Early Visionaries Academy Charter School. I think that the superintendent gave, laid out a good argument for why this is not in the community's best interest at this time, especially because of the potential for it to decrease funding for our schools and students here in the Clark County School District.
Okay. Dr. Gant, I believe you seconded, correct? Do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
No, no additional thoughts at this time.
All right, any others? Dr. Yeager?
I would just like to highlight the comment that the district made, that the equitable enrollment practices were unclear and sort of contrary to how we like to think about it in this district about equity.
Okay. Other thoughts? Okay, there is a motion on the floor, so I'm going to go ahead and call a vote. All in favor of rejecting the application for the Early Visionaries Academy Charter School, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That motion passes with four ayes and one abstention. Let's see, we are now at item C, Visionaries Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship Charter School application. We need a motion.
I move that we reject the Visionaries Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship Charter School application.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Davis and seconded by Mr. Denson. Ms. Davis, would you like to start the round of comments?
Simply that that's the precursor to the previous motion that we denied.
Okay. Mr. Denson, any thoughts?
Same, it would divert resources from CCSD, and I think it said here, create a disjointed, inequitable approach to public education in Athens.
Okay. Any other thoughts, members? Okay, the motion is, yes, Ms. Bagby?
The word that catches my attention is entrepreneurship. And so if they're trying to teach people how to be prepared for sustaining themselves once they leave school, I think, yes, we should consider this application.
Okay, any other thoughts? All right. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. We'll go ahead and call a vote for item C, the application for the Visionaries Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship Charter School. All in favor of opposing the application, please raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's yay. And any nays? Okay, so that is four, five and one. Okay, we are now at our contract list. We need a motion.
I move that we approve the personnel, the contact list, contract list for 20, was it 25, 26 school year?
Can I get a second?
Sorry, second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Davis, seconded by Dr. Yeager. All in favor of approving the 25, 26 contract list, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed and abstentions? Okay, that motion passes five and one. Now we are at item E, personnel.
I move that we approve the personnel report for March 13th.
Second.
Okay, that motion has been made and seconded, Dr. Yeager and Mr. Denson. All in favor of approving the March 13th personnel list, raise your hand high and say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Davis, you had a question?
I do, because I only got to see this in between our meetings. And so as I looked at the personnel list, I'm just asking for consideration of us tracking the resignations and where they're coming from in our schools, so that we can start to see collectively where the changes are happening. I don't, and again, I don't want to stop this acceptance of this, but I would like some additional information that would help us start to see trends in our schools. Okay?
I believe we used to get that data in our board report, where it would sort of track where teachers were moving to and from. If you could add that back to our next board report, thank you. Okay, so we are now at a vote for the personnel list. All in favor of approving the personnel list, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes five, one. And now we are at the personnel addendum.
I move that we approve the personnel addendum.
Okay, that motion, oh, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made, Dr. Yeager, seconded, Mr. Denson. All in favor of approving the personnel addendum, please raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
I'm not opposed, I just don't see it. So I need a clarification. So that's good. Now I know, I'm good. I'm aye.
Okay, thank you. So can we get, can we get that vote one more time? All in favor, raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Dr. Gant?
An abstention, yeah.
All right, so four and two. Okay, now we are at information items and board community reports, starting with early Head Start, Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes and reports. Mr. Denson, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This report here is specifically from our December meeting. But I do think, you know, I do recommend everybody look this over monthly. This does, since we had some discussion about enrollment with our early Head Start and our Head Start, this document will give you those numbers. As we can see here with early Head Start, and so that's pregnant women up to three years old. In November, we had an enrollment of 234 children there. And I have to say, our centers are doing a great job. There's a lot of requirements, including ensuring that 10% of the population has a disability, so that we are serving disabled children also. And we are just under that threshold of 10% there at early Head Start. You can also see the attendance rates, where we have to report to the federal government anytime that there is attendance rate in a classroom under 85% and why. Honestly, most of our classes are hitting above 85% for all these children, which is really impressive when you have so much, you know, kids being sick and everything, and that is the leading cause for why it's happening. And also with our Head Start program, which is, you know, four and five-year-olds, have 102 children enrolled as of November. Again, we are hitting that disability threshold of over 10%. And again, having really good attendance and hitting our attendance benchmarks in most classrooms also. So, and then I also want to just thank Board President Anderson for also attending. And we did our federal review for early Head Start and Head Start last week, and I think it went really, really well. And the parents that make up this committee did a fantastic job also, along with staff. So yeah, that's the update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Denson. Yes, Ms. Bagby, you had a question?
I have a question for Mr. Denson. You said that in the Head Start, you were talking about disabilities. What kind of disabilities?
You can look through here on the documents. At this time, for early Head Starts, of the 20 children, there is 15 with non-categorical developmental delays. There are two that are having their disabilities still evaluated and pending. And there are five children that have speech or language impairments. For Head Starts, there are nine children with developmental delays, four children with speech-language impairments, one child with a health impairment, and then two also that their assessment is still pending.
So are all, any of these children considered the ADD and all these different types of deficits at this point or not?
I cannot speak beyond what is, for privacy matters, and also I just don't have the data in front of me, but for, this is as far as the data goes that we have here.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our Athens Community Career Academy report. Oh, Mr. Davis, Mr. Evans is out. Ms. Davis, did you attend?
I did. I had the opportunity to attend the, I think it was the very first, I guess it's the opening of the Buzz Cafe. We had a wonderful lunch offered in celebration of Mardi Gras. Excellent presentation of the food. The children were fantastic in terms of their mannerisms and actually doing it. I mean, it felt like we were in like at least a three-star restaurant. They were excited about the dishes that they prepared. The chef came out and explained that the children chose those dishes. We had beignets, of all things. And I'm like, that was a pretty tough thing to do on a grand opening of a small cafe, but it was really well attended, very much a different atmosphere, very calm. So I was thinking, boy, this is going to be a great place to have those brunch time meetings. And I believe that they're going to continue this as a practice. And the fee was very reasonable. It's what you would pay for a lunch at most any of our kind of, you know, chain restaurants that are around town. So a great experience, reservations were easy, and the service was excellent. So thank you. Something new.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And yeah, they do have, I think, monthly pop-ups that we can all sign up for, community members, board members, district, and others. Thank you so much. Community Oversight Committee report?
That's going to be me too. And I'm afraid I missed this week's meeting. I was very ill and not able to make the Tuesday meeting. But the, I did bring forward the concerns that were expressed about, again, access to the public for the planning for the rebuilding of Gaines Elementary. So that was the main thing that was discussed at the, at the meeting. I think we've since received correspondence from the Oversight Committee, and I don't know that there is a response to be rendered, but if so, I will leave that up to the superintendent.
Okay, let's see. Now we are at our Athens Area Community Foundation. I think it's Mr. Denson. You go, do we have someone? Oh, it's Heidi, that's right. Okay. And if I remember right, they had, they were having a meeting in March, so she can update us in April. Okay, thank you. Envision Athens? Mr. Denson?
That one's me, but yeah, we did not have a meeting this month, last month. We have a meeting coming up next week, so I'll report back next month.
Thank you. And our Sustainability Committee. Dr. Yeager, have you had an opportunity to go?
So I haven't been yet. I missed this week's meeting. I do know that they are in the process of pulling together all of the recommendations that we've been working on for the year. And I do believe they plan to present to the board or would like to present to the board if they can get on the agenda for April.
Yes, and I did receive that email and responded that we will add them to the April agenda.
A lot of good work has been done, and so you should be pleased to help with the report.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to it. Okay, that is all for our informational items, and now we are at item 14.
Dr. Anderson, I'm so sorry. I realize, just for the record, that when I voted, when I abstained, I probably needed to provide a reason. And so it was a conflict of interest.
And just for information for all board members, in the situation where you abstain, according to GSBA, it is best practice to state your reason for abstention. And that is honestly something that I didn't know when I first started rolled onto the board. So just, you know, sharing that, that tiny bit of wisdom that, you know, you only get being a veteran. All right, I think we are...
I have two, I'd like to respond to a couple of things here.
Ms. Bagby?
Yes. So when we were talking in the first meeting today, when we talked about Teach Town, and we were talking about the money, and I thought Mr. Denson said, I couldn't understand the word he used. So I thought we were going to put this aside to another time to vote. But as you presented it to everybody, it was already approved. But I did not want to approve for Teach Town, however, that's over. But I will say that up here on this board, and when we have to say that we are agreeing or disagreeing with something, the law says that we don't have to sign blank papers. And so I did not sign the paper that you had in there when we were in the session, because you can't have someone sign something when it's blank. So that's why I didn't sign it. Not that I, is that right, Mr. Pruitt? That when I sign, when I write my name on something, I'm actually admitting that everything above is correct, and that paper was not filled out at all, and that's why I did not sign it.
Okay, just sign it later.
I feel pressured, and I don't want to feel intimidated. And so...
Okay, well, if you just hang around a minute after the meeting, I'm sure they can get it completed, and you can sign it before you leave.
All right, we are ready to conclude, I believe. Was there a motion on the floor for adjournment yet?
Aye.
Okay.
I will, I will make that motion for us to adjourn.
Okay. I need a second.
A second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, raise your hand high, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. We'll see you all next month.